Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Edwards, go right on. We don't know who we are? I appreciate that, sir. Oh, thank you. Members of our staff look out for us. I'll say good evening again. Welcome, everyone. This is our November, uh, school board meeting, and we see quite a number of people out there in our audience, and I might miss some of our visitors by names, but you're welcome. But I do want to acknowledge the presence of Dr. Rohan Geiger, who is our new chief academic officer, uh, here working with us as a representative from the Virginia Department of Education. He has lots of experience in education, and he retired as a superintendent from New Kent County School Division. Welcome, Dr. Geiger. Would you please stand up so the audience can see you?
Nice to be here. Thank you for that call.
Thank you. And as we get to the section regarding the MOU, if you wish to make some statements, you're certainly invited to do so at that point. And Dr. Bell or I will recognize you at that point, as a matter of fact. So at this time, will you please join us for the pledge of allegiance? We have, uh, we have a student from Franklin High School, do we not? Pardon me. Was it Franklin High tonight?
Yes.
To lead us? All right. I did not see. Oh, I'm so sorry. And pardon me, please. I didn't see Dr. Watson. So by all means, would you give us your name and tell us what maybe you're going to do beyond high school?
My name is Lauren Kozie, and I want to attend college to become an English as a Second Language teacher.
Wonderful. Welcome this evening. Would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Certification by the school board.
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
It has been properly moved in second that whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge that we only acted on those two things as specified. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Roll call at this time by our clerk.
Robert Holt?
Here.
Nancy Godwin?
Here.
Bertha Jackson?
Here.
Edna King?
Here.
Jeanette Austin?
Here.
Will Council?
Here.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. Kendrick. Motions, um, from the closed session. Do we have any?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Counsel.
I make a motion to accept the personnel agenda as brought to us by the superintendent.
A second.
It's properly moved in second that we accept the recommendations for employment as brought to us by the superintendent. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's properly moved in second that we approve the agenda. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Good news. So at this time, we will ask the superintendent to go through the items as listed here, please.
Madam Chair, board members, the first item that we would like to pursue tonight are the VSBA School Board Academy Awards. Mrs. Kendrick will present those.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is both my pleasure and a distinct honor to recognize members of the Franklin City School Board and, um, Dr. Bell for their participation in, um, various academies that were held by the VSBA. School board members earn academy credits through participation in VSB meetings and other academy sessions and through VSB governance and service activities. Um, if I, once I call your name, if you could come forward to receive your award, I would greatly appreciate that. Um, first, we have Mr. William Counsel. Mr. Counsel is being recognized for receiving fifteen credits per year. Um, Dr. Bell, if you could come forward. Dr. Bell is being recognized for receiving forty-eight credits in two years, and he is also awarded a silver pin from VSB. Mrs. Nancy Godwin? She is being recognized, um, for receiving forty-eight credits in two years, and she will also be awarded a silver VSB pin. Mrs. Edna King? Mrs. King is being recognized for receiving sixty-six credits in two years. She will receive a gold VSB pin. And Ms. Jeanette Austin, if you could come forward. She is being recognized for receiving eighty-four credits in two years, and she's receiving this distinctive starfish pin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kendrick. At this time, we would like to recognize our sitting attorney. Mr. Taylor Williams is the, not only the Franklin City Attorney, but he also works with the Franklin City Public School School Board. In recognition and deep appreciation for your faithful service, dedication, and support provided to the school board, superintendent, administrative staff, employees, and most importantly, the children of Franklin City Public Schools, given this twelfth day of November, two thousand and fifteen, Dr. Willie J. Bell Jr., Superintendent, School Board members, Edna King Chair, Jeanette Austin, Will Counsel, Andrea Hall Leonard Vice Chair, Nancy Godwin, Verda Jackson, and Robert Holt. And the presentation has been signed by myself and Mrs. King.
Mr. Williams does work exceptionally hard, and in order to keep us focused on what is legal, he takes time to really work with us in terms of being sure that we understand the codes, and we appreciate that, Mr. Williams. Tonight was a perfect example. Thank you.
At this time, we would like to call the athletic director for Franklin High School forward, and he will present what the division and Franklin High School received that pertains to the Claudia Dawson Virginia High School League Sportsmanship Award for Franklin High. Coach Lees.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, this award that we, um, received, you all heard about it this summer, um, we finally got the hardware. Um, it's Claudia Dawson's Sportsmanship Award. Um, there's, we were one of twenty-nine schools in the whole state of Virginia to receive it, which is a great honor. Um, it's a lot of hard work. If I couldn't have done it all without, um, Ms. Maureen. She teaches biology for us. She helps me out all the time. But Claudell Dawson stood for not just sportsmanship. She stood for integrity and not just athletics, but participants like, um, fans coming to the games, how they act. But there was a lot of paperwork that we had to do to, um, receive this award. Um, this is the first time Franklin High School's ever received it, and it's gonna be one of many, because that's one thing we stand for, or I stand for, is sportsmanship at Franklin High School. So we have this plaque we're gonna put up. And we have this huge banner that is put up in the gym. So it's one of many that we're gonna receive, but, um, it's the first one we got, so.
So how does it get presented to the students?
How does it get presented to the students? Um, we're going to hang it up and recognize it. We have not announced it yet to the school yet, but it's one thing that we're gonna do is the plaque we're gonna hang up in, um, the school, and also this is going to the gym to let them know that, you know, sportsmanship, not just our fans, just not our players, but also our fans, it's important they act the right way. So, um, we're very proud of it, so we're gonna continue it. I have one more thing to add, if I can, Ms. King.
Sure.
Um, you guys are gonna hear about coming up in January, but, um, we already started meeting. We have a committee. We're gonna have a Hall of Fame for not just athletes, but young men and women that went to Franklin High School, that might have went to war, came out heroes. It's just not for athletics. And we're going back as far as nineteen oh eight because we want to include Mr. Williams. But we're including Hayden High School and...
Oh, great.
So we're including everything. And our marketing class is coming up with a, um, logo to put on this award that we're gonna have. You're gonna hear more about it in January, and we're gonna have our first class in October. Um, so we're looking forward to it. There's an application gonna be online, so I'm just giving you all a heads up. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for everything that you do, Mr. Lees. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Lees. The next recognition is to our November, two thousand and fifteen alumnus of the month, Mr. Corey Olds. Corey Olds is a nineteen eighty-eight graduate of Franklin High School. While at Franklin High, Corey was very active. He was a member of the SGA, band, DECA, SCA, football, baseball, and wrestling teams. After graduation from Franklin High School, Corey went on to enter into the US, United States Army Reserves, where he served for twelve years. Corey attended Hampton University and graduated with a degree in mathematics. After graduation, Corey worked in the financial services industry for thirteen years. In two thousand and eight, Corey partnered with several friends to purchase a counseling company. In two thousand and eleven, he and one of the partners founded GYG Mental Health Agency and Empowerment and Uplifting Foundation. GYG provides therapeutic counseling services to families throughout the Hampton Roads area. Empowerment and Uplifting Foundation is a five oh one C three that empowers families and uplifts communities. Corey has been married for eighteen years and has two children. Corey is also a proud member of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Corey's passion is helping his community and others reach their full potential. GYG's motto is changing the world, one family at a time, and Corey does his best to live that each day. Corey Olds, November, two thousand and fifteen alumnus of the month. With our best student and teacher attendance, Mr. Edwards will present that this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Good evening to the board members, and good evening to everyone present here today. Dr. Bell, as you know, dedicated to excellence is the motto here in Franklin City Public Schools, and excellence has once again been bestowed upon us because this month only a tenth of a point separated the schools as it relates to student attendance and staff attendance. So without further ado, the best student attendance award goes to JP King at ninety-eight point four nine percent. JP King, once again. And now the best teacher attendance award goes to SP Morton at ninety-six point twenty-three.
Thank you. Coming back home, baby. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mrs. Francis will make sure. You need, look, you need to fuss at your colleague back there. He's trying to hold on to it.
Very good.
Very good. Congratulations.
Good. May I add one thing, uh, in terms of good news because we didn't do it last month at our school board meeting, but during the month of October, we toured our three schools in the city of Franklin, and it was a marvelous experience. The teachers were on task. There was an impressive use of technology in instruction. The students were engaged, and the buildings were exceptionally clean. And I'd just like to thank you all on behalf of the school board, for those of us who were in attendance, Mrs. Austin, Mrs. Godwin, Mrs. Jackson, and I were able to join staff for this particular tour, and it was very good, such a rewarding experience. And keep up the good work. I believe that anyone could walk into our buildings on any given day and see the things that we saw on that day. Thanks a million to building principals, teachers, and all of you for your hard work, and parents, and our substitute teachers, everyone. Thank you so very much. Okay. Citizens' time. Do we have anyone signed up to speak, Mrs. Kendrick?
Yes, ma'am. We have four.
Oh, wonderful. All right. So, Mrs. Kendrick, would you please read our policy for our citizens' time?
Yes, ma'am. Rules for citizens' time at school board meetings. The agenda for regular monthly meetings of the Franklin City School Board will provide for a citizens' time after the meeting report. A second opportunity for citizens' time, if needed, will be verbatim before adjournment, usually before closed meeting. An individual or representative of a group desiring to speak to the Franklin City School Board concerning an item not the subject of a public hearing is invited to do so during citizens' time. Any individual or representative of a school, I mean, I'm sorry, of a group desiring to speak during citizens' time must make a request to the clerk of the board before seven PM on the date of the meeting. The clerk will maintain a sound sheet for individuals desiring to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the name of the group must be identified by the speaker, and only one person per group will be allowed to speak. Speakers will be limited to five minutes, and presentations are subject to the chairman's discretion. Visual aids are permitted at the chairman's discretion. The school board will not permit speakers to discuss specific personnel or student concerns during the public session, but may be invited to do so during closed meeting. Names, titles, or positions which can identify specific individuals will not be allowed during the public session. Speakers having specific personnel or student concerns may sign to speak on these topics during closed meeting. Only the speaker or representative of a group may be present during closed meeting. Permission to speak before the school board in closed meeting is at the discretion of the Franklin City School Board. Speakers will be invited individually to address the school board at the appropriate time and will advance to the opponent, then state clearly his or her name, address, and group if appropriate. The speaker will give the subject of the presentation and be prepared to answer questions from board members after his or her presentation. Issues raised by speakers during citizens' time may not be answered immediately, but may be answered after research analysis. The school board assumes the speaker will, with, I'm sorry, the school board assumes that speakers with concerns regarding a specific employee or student have discussed their concerns with the appropriate staff and have not resolved the issue to their satisfaction. Persons who address the school board at citizens' time must restrict their remarks to school matters, must address their remarks to the members of the school board, may not use profane or vulgar language, and may not engage in personal attacks against employees of the school system or other persons. Persons eligible to speak at citizens' time shall be: A) a resident of the city; B) persons who are employed by the Franklin City Schools; C) students in Franklin City School System; or D) persons who have parents or gu, gar, parent, I'm sorry; D) persons who are parents or guardians of a student or students in the Franklin City School System. Residents of the city are persons who physically live in the city and/or file and pay taxes in the city. Persons who do not abide by the above rules shall be declared out of order by the chairman or other presiding officer and shall immediately yield the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Kendrick. Would you please, uh, acknowledge those persons who called, uh, please, or who petitioned for speaking?
Yes, ma'am. First, we have Amy Phillips.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Phillips. I live at one oh eight Robin Hood Road here in the city. I have two children in the school system, and I want to take a few minutes, if you don't mind, to talk to you about educators and children in our school system. Members of the board, esteemed guests, fellow parents, and the real reason why we're here, the kids of Franklin City Public Schools, I'd like to take this opportunity to come forward to discuss a matter that has been weighing heavily on me over the last few days. For this, gonna need a little participation on your part, if you don't mind, so indulge me. I want you to take a trip back in time with me, a trip to your childhood. Each of us can remember one adult that stood out in our childhood, one adult during our years in school that made more of a difference in our lives and who we are, and who we are today than any other person. It may have been a teacher, or a coach, a principal, a custodian, a librarian, a teacher's aide. I think you get the picture. Now, in your mind, I want you to picture that person. Think of why they are so important to you. For some, it is the encouragement they gave you. For some, it was the unconditional love you felt when, around them that you didn't feel from anyone else. For others, it was the discipline and guidance that they gave you. You got that image in your head? Now, imagine not having that experience. Imagine if that person had been removed from that position. How would your life be different? Imagine if the reason they were removed from that post was because of something petty, something they couldn't have been, that could have been easily handled with a far less severe consequence. Imagine if that individual was truly making a change in the lives of those students he or she was working with, not just making them a better student or athlete, but a better person, a better citizen, a better overall individual. I think we, as adults, often let petty issues and/or our feeling that we need to puff out our chest and assert our authority get in the way of making the decisions that are for the greater good, or even just handle things the right way. When you are in education, it's really about one thing. It's about those kids, the minds that are shaping and leading us into tomorrow, the ones that are gonna make sure our social security is there in the future, and more than likely, those that are gonna pick our nursing homes for us. That being said, the reason I'm bringing all of this up, in the last couple of years, we have had quite a bit of turmoil within our school system, both academically and athletically. We've had a lot of issues that have come up and gone on, and I thought we were getting back on track until this week. And there were some rash decisions that were made that unfortunately is going to prevent some of that guidance from being there that I have seen make a big change within our school, within our athletic department. I hate to see this happen. I can speak on behalf of every parent and every kid that played on that, on, on... I can speak on behalf of every parent and every kid that played on that, on that particular team. And I can say, this is a great disservice to the school system. Of course, I won't get into names, I won't get into positions. I don't know if all of you are aware of what went on. But this is gonna have a huge impact on these kids. I have seen such change within this, and it's good change, especially from where we were two years ago. But unfortunately, because of a rash decision, it's not gonna continue. And I think that's a great disservice to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And I suppose that I would have a question. Mrs. Phillips, and maybe I should have asked that before you left the podium, but I'm thinking.
I apologize.
And my only question, at what school are you referring?
Franklin High School.
All right, thank you, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Josette Stole Hayes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board representatives, and all of our distinguished guests that are with us. My name is Josette Stole Hayes. I reside at 704 Canterbury Court here in the city limits. I have one child presently enrolled at S.P. Morton, a very happy, very smart fourth grader. I'm here representing the Parent Teacher Association with S.P. Morton. As you've seen my face here before, over the years, five years now, and I'm very proud of it because we've really, we've come a long way. Ms. Godwin served as president at one time, and I followed in right behind her. And I'm very proud to say she's my friend, and I learned a lot from her. Beside you, you have a packet that the PTA put together. We would like for you to be as involved as you possibly can with the PTA. You have our welcome letter that we put out every year. You also have there the calendar of events that will give you an idea. Maybe you can put something on your calendar for this year and join us at one of our events. We have our monthly Dairy Queen Nights, and we do have a school board member that tries to frequent it. He likes ice cream. Also, on one of those pages, you'll see that we have a employee appreciation, an employee appreciation calendar where we would honor, obviously, our teachers, our principals. We obviously honor our volunteers every April. This is, this goes on all year long. We also have in there a spirit appreciation where we have students do something different, a couple different times throughout the school year. As a matter of fact, tomorrow happens to be Crazy Hair Day. So they get to do whatever they want, as long as they're wearing their school uniforms. But they can put, you know, the girls like to put little dyes in their hair. But we strongly encourage you to try to somehow be a part of our PTA. We, of course, are advocates for these children. We are the voices. You are the voices. You know that, that is why you are here, that is why we come to you. So we want you to be a part, help us to help these students so that they know that we have their back, okay? Just to touch on just a couple of things. This year, I want to share with you, we were informed that the 2014-2015 PTA year was one of the best PTA years for the state of Virginia, and that is thanks to the parents that we had actively involved at S.P. Morton. So that gives you kind of an idea of what we're really doing, what we're striving to do day in and day out. Also, just so that you know, PTA is an empowered, informed, and responsible unit. The PTA is a powerful network that has over nearly, or excuse me, nearly five million people that are a part of the National PTA. That includes us. So, S.P. Morton, we're this small community, but that's, the key word there was "community." We've all come together for every one of these students, not just at S.P. Morton. We strongly support J.P. King, we strongly support Franklin High School. That is what we do. I want to read a couple quotes that I've had parents give to me over the last couple of years as to why they've joined the PTA. One particular parent said, "PTA is a professional and respected association with tons of training and support for its volunteers." There's lots of training. We, there are many options that they can take. There's conferences every year, there's webinars that we can be a part of. It does help so that these parents understand what we're trying to do for these children. Another one, "Our children are only getting one childhood." Ms. Phillips just touched on that. "One childhood." So why isn't the PTA, the PTA is that face right there every day to put a smile on each child's face. We're there to do something for them. Another one, a parent said that they wanted to be an advocate for their children, to speak up, as I've already addressed, speak up for these children. These young children don't have it, they have no idea. They have no idea what we're doing. They just know we're gonna have fun while we do it. I do want to introduce to you, I have two of my other officers with me tonight. The others were not able to attend, just so that they can be recognized that they did attend tonight. I have Mrs. Naomi Wellerstrom, she is our vice president in charge of membership. And then I have Mrs. Gina Brown, who is our second vice president in charge of hospitality. Ladies, would you stand, please? Thank you. As I said, the others were not able to attend, but that would be Mrs. Catherine Connor, who is our treasurer now for seven years. And then we have Mrs. Belinda Rawlings, who is our recording secretary as well. In your packet, you'll see there's a long peach-colored paper. On there, we gave three different options this year for memberships. Ooh, I'm gonna get through it, I promise I'm gonna get through it. But to give you an idea of what the T-shirt might say, I'm wearing our new T-shirt. We do have a few left. We are strong believers in. Check it out.
Every child's potential is a reality at S.P. Morton Elementary, wonderful.
Yes, ma'am. Potential with our students is a reality at S.P. Morton. Thank you for your time.
Thank, Mrs. Stole Hayes.
Yes, ma'am.
You do so very much with the PTA, you really do, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
We do. And many times, we do have conflicts, can't be there, but you have our support, believe me.
Thank you.
And we will keep supporting you. You do an excellent job, thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there?
Yes, ma'am, Phil Cozy.
How y'all doing?
Well done, well done.
My name's Phil Cozy, I live at 109 Cary Drive. I have one child who goes to Franklin High School. And I'm here to discuss, on behalf of her, I didn't have any speech. I didn't even know I was gonna talk to y'all until I was halfway home from Chesapeake Square. My daughter, who helped lead y'all through the pledge of allegiance, I'm very proud of. She's National Honor Roll Society, she's in theater, and she does multiple sports at Franklin High School. And my fear is, just like Ms. Phillips said about influences in these kids' lives, well, there's a person that has made a great influence on her life, and that person is, from what I understand, not gonna be in her life next year. And my fear for her is that, you know, this isn't about, and I'm not even sure what happened, but the reality of it is, is that if it's something that happened between him and an administrator, or him or somebody in the other faculty or something like that, it's not supposed to be about that. It's supposed to be about the children. And if, you know, we all watch the news every day, none of these kids, not none of the, a lot of these kids nowadays have no respect for any authority. We're seeing it all the time, you know, and this particular person gets respect, demands respect. They all like him, there's no problems, and I just think it would be a shame if we lost that person because of something very, very petty, because it is supposed to be all about our kids. And my daughter loves this individual, and is very, very sad that there's a potential that that person won't be there for her next year, her senior year. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lauren Cozy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lauren Cozy. I live at 109 Cary Drive in Franklin. I'm a student at Franklin High School. As a member of the, one of the sports teams at Franklin High School, I'd like to address something that recently happened. Over the past several months, our team has come to grow immensely, and many things have changed. We had become heavily influenced by a particular leader, and this person has come to serve as our role model and teach us many things, not only about our sport, but about life. In the past, the, the girls volleyball team hasn't exactly been thought of as a main priority at Franklin High School, but this particular person has fought as hard as he could for this to change. We were out there practicing all throughout the summer, learning new skills and improving the skills we already learned. This type of hard work is not something that is easily recognized or felt by anyone other than us. We grew as a family under this leadership and improved our game immensely. Unfortunately, this leader has been removed from his position in our family. And to think that the next year's group of players will not have the opportunity to experience everything as we did truly does break my heart. We all had such a great time playing together and learning together, and it's very difficult to form a bond as strong as the one, as strong as this one was, and for it to be broken now would truly be a shame. I believe we need to stick together as a team and as a family if we wish to continue to grow and improve even further, and I think now is an important time to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone else?
No, ma'am, we are no others.
Thank you. Right. So, and I do appreciate those of you who came forward and had comments this evening for the board, and we assure you that this will be an item that we will look at. Thank you for coming forward. Consent agenda. Is, we take each item separately, since there is no comment? We'll start with the minutes. Action to approve the minutes for no, for October the 15th, 2015.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve October 15th school board meeting minutes.
Second.
Right, has been properly moved in second, and I don't know whom did you hear first, Mrs.?
Mrs. Austin.
All right. It has been properly moved in second that we approve the minutes of the October 15th, 2015 school board meeting. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the minutes are approved. Action to approve bills for payment.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Bell.
Mrs. Darrell will come forward to ask for the approval to pay the bills for the month.
Good evening, Madam Chair. King, fellow board members, and Dr. Bell, I ask the board to approve the bills for payment at this time.
All right, are there questions? We had quite a number of recorded, ruined checks, and I think that we asked, asked that question before.
But this time, they're because the check machine actually ruined them versus before they were voided.
All right, so that was with the bank?
Yes.
With the bank?
Yes.
All right, questions or comments, anyone else? Motion is in order.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the bills for payment. Second.
It's properly moved in second, we approve the bills for payment. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Darrell.
Thank you, Mrs. Darrell. Superintendents' report.
Madam Chair, board members, the, the board asked for the, an opportunity to have the chance to read the Strategic Math and Literacy ESET plan from Catapult. We have those representatives with us tonight. If there are any questions concerning the ESET plan for Catapult from Joseph P. King Middle School.
So, with Catapult representatives come forward, and then if you have questions, if anyone on the board should have questions about the math and literacy strategic ESET plan for J.P. King that was presented last month, we delayed action or a discussion because we, it was given to us during the meeting, and that allowed us an opportunity to read the plan. Does anyone have any questions? Any comments? I was impressed with the plan.
Thank you so much.
And I was impressed because we are not changing things.
That's right.
You are continuing what you were doing, and you're building on that. And I see that as being so significant because you have been in that school the number of years that you have, and now you're not there any longer, so you've done a plan that's going to continue. And the addition of the math specialist and the reading specialist will then assume some of those responsibilities that you were doing.
Yes, ma'am.
I like that. So it means that we continue down the same path that J.P. King, and we know that we are gonna have much success this year in doing that because it doesn't mean that the staff there will be burdened with learning new things inasmuch as you're no longer there. I like this approach. I was really impressed as I read the plan.
Thank you so much.
Now, I have one question, however, you know that I have a question. I, I have looked at the math book that is utilized at J.P. King, and I just love that book. And I noticed that at the end of the chapters, that there are wonderful culminating activities. Of course, I wouldn't expect the students to do all of them. And that could maybe result in project presentation. Do we do those? Do we use those?
When I originally wrote the curriculum, I included some of those into the plan that the teacher could use as an option. Right now, we're pushing Quantiles, as Mr. Edwards has asked. So that's the push now, and they have projects that are aligned to our state standards, and they are proven to raise scores.
Great, great, but it could be some of those activities.
Yes, ma'am, definitely, yes, ma'am.
Because there, I mean, there are some very good ones that, end of each chapter.
They are great looks.
Yes, they are. Any other questions or comments, anyone?
I have a question. I know you wrote, you updated all our curriculums, but was all aligned with all the SOLs.
Yes, ma'am.
As that, as those change, as you know they will, who, who is it that's under responsi- is it people at building level that's under responsible for, to make the changes? The math coach or?
Yes, ma'am, the math coach will make the changes for math, and the readings specialist will make the changes for reading.
My question, you said you're pushing toward, what, what did you say, that Mr. Edwards?
For Quantiles.
Yes.
So Quantiles.
You wanna come up and explain it, Mr. Edwards? Well, maybe everybody has.
She's much more eloquent than I am.
Help me out, Mr. Edwards.
Dr. Leonard, and fellow board members, Quantiles is a, is aligned to the standard, and it is about mathematics, and it presents mathematics in a range. You know, we talk a lot about grade level. We talk Quantiles for math, and we talk Lexiles for reading. As you know, at the end of an SOL score, when a child receives their report on the SOL, there's a Q and an L behind the score. When they receive that in math, it's for Quantiles, again, L for Lexiles. So in this global diverse world we live in, we want our children, as Cover would say, with the end in mind. I give it, for an example, Accelerated Reader, it's a great tool that our teachers utilize. But generally speaking, after the middle school, we don't use Accelerated Reader. So if we start talking Quantiles and Lexiles from the third grade and beyond, then when they reach the collegiate days, then they'll know their language as well as their high school days. But it gives it in a range, and if we can keep the children in that range, then we not only have a snapshot at grade level, but they're prepared for the next level as well. And that website is quantiles.com. And we're moving toward interventions, I'm sorry, I can, oh, there it is, wow.
Yeah, there it is.
Technology.
Framework for math.
And just to give you a quick example of how powerful it is, we use interactive achievement to do our benchmarks. And we're moving toward interventions that students can use at school as well as at home. So this is a tool that we can teach our parents as well. So if you go to the Quantiles website, push Quantile Teacher Assistant, something magical happens. We pull the state of Virginia up. And I like to say that, you know, Virginia's not only for lovers, it's for learners. And you can go through that range from kindergarten, so you pick your student's grade level, from kindergarten through Algebra II. And so let's just say Algebra I, because that's a live example we used together today in the instructional staff development with Catapult, when we had our special education teachers present and Mrs. Howard and Vaughn. And then, voila, there are all the standards that are aligned to the Virginia. And then if we push search, the standard appears, and there's that Quantile range. And it says below the Quantile range, within the Quantile range, and above the Quantile. And it says below the Quantile range, within the Quantile range, and above the Quantile range. So students who don't quite understand, students who understand, and then the students who already have mastered it and moved beyond. And if we push one of the ranges, let's just say, for example, we push this range here, more. It actually gives you downloadable resources. And a lot of our students are using Khan Academy, Math for Nerds, but this actually gives you the site that's already aligned to the standard. And if we push that video there, the video comes up already aligned, and the teacher can use this as a tool in after-school tutoring. To help go along with the great instruction that she, or he has already given. And that's an example of Quantiles, and we're working with our teachers to understand Quantiles and implement Quantiles, as well as we'll be working with our parents. Because again, if you go back to the Quantile website, use the Quantile framework, Math at Home is a component that will help our parents and students get at school and at home the same type of interventions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We were so prepared to tell you that, yes.
And just to, um, put one more thing on that, the Math at Home, those books that you love so much, they get hooked up with the Math at Home.
So that is correlated with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, terrific.
Any textbook written is correlated within the con, within the Quantile framework.
That is terrific.
And a word educators love and, um, superintendents and boards across the nation, it's free.
Uh, Mr. Ed, I suppose I have another question, though. Yes, and parent, pacing, pacing, you did the three areas, the students who have mastered, students have not mastered.
Yes, ma'am.
So this then gives us another way to even look at pacing, doesn't it?
Oh, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Terrific.
And that tier one, tier two, tier three, yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the strategic exit plan? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks to you. Dr. Bell, you want to go first?
Madam Chair, board members. The memorandum of understanding that covers the areas, the four essential areas that we have in our corrective action plan, curricular alignment, human resources, purpose and direction, leadership and governance. If you have any questions in those areas, we are prepared to answer them.
Any questions, anyone? I guess that I have, anyone? The grant for the school psychologist, is this through the oversea foundation?
Yes, ma'am. We, uh, Mrs. Beaman and I attended, we've attended two sessions with oversea hospital, where we are in the process of, where we've submitted now, a grant where we can receive financial assistance to have a psychology, own, a psychologist on site for the next three years. Now, it, the first year, it covers, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars of their salary. The second year, it decreases to around sixty-five to fifty thousand, and the third year, that's around a third of it. But what it does, it gives us an opportunity in budget season to prepare for the decrease in that psychologist's funding. But next year, instead of having a contracted service, we can have somebody on site at all time through oversea foundation.
And that was, you addressed my concern, how will we pay for it, or will it be sustained financially throughout?
The second and third year, we would have to sustain it financially. But we always have the opportunity to go back and continue to submit a grant.
Oh, that's good, right? Questions, anyone? Uh, the coordinator of operations service on a national panel during the School Nutrition Association webinar.
Yes.
Might we hear something about that?
Mr. White, can you come forward, sir?
Good evening, Ms. King, board members, and Dr. Bell. That was about two weeks ago, I was asked to participate in the panel. And as you know, um, we're, we're doing the breakfast in the classroom at all of our schools now. That's, we're one of the few divisions in the state that are doing it at all the schools. I think there's only about two or three in the entire state. Um, at that point, we've been doing some things and obviously working with the cafeteria staff and the administrative staff and the teachers at all the schools. Um, we have implemented the breakfast in the classroom by two different delivery methods. At the middle and high school, we have direct delivery where the teachers come to the cafeteria. They pick up the, the breakfast for their students. And at the elementary school, they still go through the line, and that's known as a bag and go. We also have a breakfast after breakfast program, which, so if a student comes to school late, they still get to eat. And that, that breakfast is available all the way up until lunchtime. So student will have breakfast when they come to get to school. Uh, this has really done us well, and as you know, we also had a, we applied for a couple of grants. The Partners for Breakfast in the Classroom, which we received, uh, I think it was forty-seven thousand dollars last year from, for S.P. Morton. We also applied for a grant for the middle and high school for this year. Uh, that grant is, is in, uh, process of, should be approved in the next couple of days. So we, we'll be buying additional equipment for them. We've also purchased a lot of equipment for the elementary school. Um, we purchased refrigerators, trays, um, carts, a lot of things that we needed to support the breakfast in the classroom program. And again, that's the, uh, the, the money we've gotten from the grant, so that's worked out very well for us. As part of this, uh, they, Partners for Breakfast in the Classroom and the School Nutrition Association asked me to participate in a panel and discuss some of the, uh, some of the things we've been putting into place for our school divisions. There were approximately, I think, two hundred and fifty other school divisions that were taking part, stat, this nationwide, that ta, taking part nationwide as part of the, uh, as part of the webinar. And so we, we were very happy to kind of give them some of the ideas that we were doing, and, and a lot of things we were doing. Uh, School Nutrition Association is actually putting on their website for other folks to follow. And they also had a blog which followed the webinar, and I hadn't gotten to see that yet, but that's, should be just recently up there.
Congratulations, wonderful.
Mr. White, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to applaud you for this recognition, this is terrific.
Mr. White, while you're standing there, can you, um, discuss the award that we will be presenting with next week?
Okay, yes, um, next week, uh, uh, Dr. Bell and I were invited up to Department of Education, State Department of Education.
And board members were invited to.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, that's right, that's correct. You're all invited to, it's on Thursday, the nineteenth. Um, and, and we are going to, um, to DOE, we'll, we'll be receiving award for the, uh, community eligibility program, which, again, we started, uh, last year, and that's the program that allows us to feed all of our children breakfast and lunch for free. And again, uh, there are seven, I can tell you on that one, I know, there's seven divisions in the state that are community eligibility schoolwide, and we are one of the seven, we were one of the first ones to get into the community eligibility program. And the program be, between that and the breakfast in the classroom is working out very well for us. So I want to, I want to thank Dr. Bell for that one, and, and you all for, you know, proving it all along the way and making sure that, that our kids can, can eat a healthy and nutritious meal, so, thank you.
Yes, and I have a question. Maybe you've discussed this before, but the in, introducing the Spot My Bus system.
Yes.
Yeah, tell, tell me a little bit about the Spot My Bus system.
I guess we can do that now. If you can pull that up.
Says plans are underway to inform parents and make the system available to parents.
Um, what, we have a system that we put into place called Spot My Bus. It's not, uh, up and running a hundred percent yet, we're, we still have a couple of, um, other things to do. But what it is, basically, it's a GPS that's on all our buses. Um, right now, we're still waiting on a couple more GPSs to come, so we can put those on the spare buses, so we can, so the program will be actually up and running. Once program is up and running, uh, it'll, it provides information, and if you can, if you see on the, on the screen, and it'll tell you where every bus is going, where every bus stopped. It will tell you how long it was there at each stop. It'll give an idea of, of, you know, like I said, the, the route that the actual bus went. Um, it tracks this data in real time. So as a, as an administrator of a school, they can go on there, they can look and see, has the bus gotten to that stop yet? And I know it's at the elementary school more often than middle and high, but they, a lot of times, parents will call and want to know, you know, why, is the bus late? Is, you know, has the bus stopped here or not stopped? And, and that, they, that said, the principal will be able to, or administrative staff will be able to provide that information. Um, it does, it, it does, gives us speed reports also, it gives us an idle report, so if the bus is sitting there idling for any length of time, we, we, we will know that also. Um, if the bus is going, so if the bus breaks down, or if they have an emergency, we know instantly where the bus is. So we don't have to, we don't have to, you know, have a lot of conversation about how to find the bus and where it is. We, like I say, we can get very, very specific with the bus. Um, the real, the, the real benefit for the parents is, is that they can, they can get an app with the, with Spot My Bus, and the app, they can put in two different times on the app. And that, and they can put in, say, ten minutes and two minutes, or twenty minutes and five minutes, and the app will then tell them the bus will be there in two minutes. So they can, um, and it works both ways, it works both taking them to school and going back home, so they can actually see the, uh, you know, where the bus is along the route. So that, it, like I said, for them, it'll save them, you know, especially on days, rainy days and very cold days and things like that, so they don't have to send the child out there very early, and, and, you know, especially on cold days where, you know, diesel buses are hard to start. They might be a little bit late, they get that, you know, parents can get that app, they can look at that, and then they don't, you know, like I said, they'll know exactly when that bus is coming. So that's the, that's the benefit for them.
Yes, now, in reference to, that, that's awesome. And in reference to STEM, when you say we are, um, making this system available to the parents and students, are we talking to the students about what kind of system that is, so that they understand? Is that, are you all using that? What this, or, or is it your plan to?
Uh, not that I'm aware of at this time, but it's, it's, there's, I mean, we haven't, this is, this is fairly new.
Okay.
We're probably the pioneer for this, this, you know, for the Spot My Bus in the state. Um, there's probably going to be a lot of publicity coming out of this one once we, once we get it up and running. So we, we're, and we're still dealing with some of the, some of the issues, we've talked about several things. I mean, we, um, I met with the gentleman two days ago that's, that's working with us on this one. Uh, we talked about the substitute buses and that kind of thing, and how we were going to handle those. Uh, we talked about how we're going to make sure that the, um, you know, if we have to combine a bus, you know, two buses into one bus, how we do that, and it'll still provide the correct information. So we're still working through some of the, some of the bugs on it, but for the most part, we're, we, like I say, we're going in the right direction. And, and I was hoping to have this thing running by the first of November, but we're still waiting on a couple of things. So, but the new date is first of December.
Okay, I think it's wonderful.
It is.
GPS related.
GPS.
Oh, you're talking about what, Mr. Edwards has? Oh. Well, as far as we're concerned, it's absolutely a free system, yes, ma'am, does cost us a dime.
But it doesn't cost us a dime.
No, ma'am, that one.
I, I'd just like to say, if, you know, after we kind of, after you all work it, work with the program, if, if it's possible, at least at the high school, um, you may have some middle school students who would be interested in learning about like geomapping.
Right.
And tie it into, to the curriculum with, with STEM, that would be excellent. Because I've gone to a conference, and they were talking about, um, teaching kids to do that. So once we have the system, and they can actually know that, you know, this system is working here in Franklin City Public Schools, and they, they can learn, it's also a teachable moment for them as well.
That's correct.
I think it's wonderful, thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
And this will also work on athletic trips?
Yes, it does.
It's not a long way?
Um, it, it'll, it'll, it, well, it maps out Virginia, I mean, it's not a, uh, I mean, it's not a local program. I mean, you're looking at a local thing here, but it, that, you can make that as big as, you know. And.
Kids come home late at night?
Yes, and we, we, they will have that also. Now, we've got a, again, we, we've talked about a couple of things, because what happens is, is the app that the parents have will be for their child on their bus. Um, we have to, we, we figured out, uh, yesterday, day before yesterday, how to make it work. So if I, if I have the app for this bus, for bus twenty-four, and bus twenty-six actually goes on the field trip or goes on the athletic event, then we, we now know how to combine those two buses, so they know when that bus is getting back. So we're, like I said, we've still got some little, few things to work out, and I think we're, we, you know, but for the most part, we've solved all the major problems and, and, you know, we'll hopefully, like I said, hopefully by the first of December have this thing up and running.
When we talk about leadership and governance under this MOU, we want to thank our division superintendent, Mr. White, that is absolutely outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Want to do that now or later?
That is outstanding.
Dr. Leonard stole our December presentation. But that's okay, so while you're standing there, you might as well discuss Nutrislice.
Okay, all right. Additionally, um, we've gone to, this is our, our new menu. Um, obviously, each school has their, their own, um, their own menu. Uh, the menu is actually, the, the nice thing about this thing is when you click on a, on an item, uh, it'll have all nutritional values of, of whatever that food item is. Uh, it, like I said, and we can, we can also, uh, we're, we're, we, this is sort of a work in progress also, because we've got some more things to do on this, because we're eventually going to be able to put all the, um, the, um, the actual ingredients of everything that we serve here. Now, we're working on getting those things from the manufacturer, so we don't have all of that right now. But eventually, the, the idea is to put all the ingredients up there and, and making sure that anybody that has any allergies to anything, they can then click on, on the item that they want, um, they can find out, uh, you know, they can see what's in there. Um, again, they can look at the nutritional value, and, and so that works out well for hopefully the parents. Uh, now, it's also, we also are offering obviously several items a day. Um, we have a mainline entree item every day, we have a salad at all the schools every day. We have, um, a Healthy Choice menu every day, which is yogurt and a cheese stick and, and, um, and some type of bread and, and the fruits and vegetables of the day. So we've, we've got, like I said, it's allowed us to expand our menu. And, and like I said, we can update it very quickly if we have to make any changes, things like that. If the, you know, if the truck doesn't come in with something today, we can actually make that change before the, the menu item is, 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 uh, served. So that works out well. It's also, um, this will also send a email to the parents if they, uh, register at the email, and it will let them know what's on the menu for the next week or two weeks, or whatever the case is. And there's also an app that goes along with it, and they can have the menu sent right to their app, to their phones. So we've done all of those things, and then the last thing that, and again, we're, again, we're still a work in progress, but this will also allow, it's interactive, so it allows our students to, our students can then go on and vote on the items that they like. And, and we can sort of gauge what, you know, what items we need to keep on the menu, what, you know, sort of what their favorites are, and, and some things that maybe they're not so happy with, and, and we need to remove and, and try something else.
We found out from the SCA that crinkle-cut fries was, um, the, the fish fry of choice versus potato whip.
Sure is. So shortly here, we'll be able to find that out for ourselves, you know, go through the SCA, but, um, but that, that's, like I said, that's the new menu, and that's what we're working on, and, and so, and it's, it's really made a difference. And I'll, I'll even, uh, sort of hit on one more thing today that, uh, for the first time since I've been here, and I've been here a little while, I guess, but, uh, for the first time since I've been here, we actually served more breakfast in all of the schools last month in October than we did lunch.
Oh, wow.
And, and our breakfast is normally, uh, last year was running around forty-five percent. So we're, we're serving, we were serving close to seventy-something percent of breakfast.
Very good.
For October, so it's, it's, programs are going very well, so.
So, Mr. White, and you asked the question, when we talked about the, um, conference in, on education in, during the summer, and the recognition that school divisions receive because of their food service. And you wanted to know, how do you get connected with that? Have you gotten that connection?
Working on that.
All right.
I sort of inquired about it with, with a couple of folks, that, that, the, the people that actually got in the war last year. And I, I don't know if those are correct people to talk to, because I guess they were, I don't, I think they've, think I'm about to infringe on their, uh, their areas or something, but I've, I've, like I said, I have inquired about that, and so we've. we will be, we will be out front and center next year.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Gager, can you come forward for, for the board members, that, any questions to follow up with the MOU? And if you would like, Dr. Gager, we'll give way for a few minutes to kind of give an update
Sure.
on what you have been providing for our division in the past couple of weeks. I know this has been a learning transition for you, but, uh, by being a former superintendent, you're a quick study.
Well, I'll be happy to, and I'll be brief, but, uh, good evening to you, Ms. King, and, uh, Dr. Bell, and members of the board, I'm looking forward to working with you. I, I have to say, as an aside, that the, you're talking about the technology being great for students, I think that's a great thing, it's great for parents too. And as a grandparent, knowing where your kids are on a bus, or the athletic situation, or knowing if a late bus where it is, that kind of situ, that would have made my life a lot easier, as a superintendent. But I think it also makes life easier for parents and grandparents that worry about their children too, so I commend you on that, I don't know of anybody else that's doing that, so that is an aside, but, uh, and, and I think you're exactly right, Dr. Bell. I've had a chance to be working with Kathy David, who I think worked with you all for two years, and I've worked with Kathy in, in other endeavors as well. And so, I'm in a transition period, uh, trying to fill her shoes and get my arms around, uh, the MOU, I've studied it, I've studied, uh, uh, the, uh, corrective, uh, action plan, and have, ever since that transition meeting that Kathy and I had, uh, Mrs. King with you, and also Dr. Bell on October twenty-second, which is a fairly short period of time, I've been here every week. I will miss next week as you all head to Williamsburg, which is my hometown for your V SBA meeting. But my hope is to be here at least weekly after that, and the focus will be on looking at the things that are in that corrective action plan, and I will help you every which I, which way I can. I've looked at the school report cards that were just released here recently. Before that, I, I knew from, uh, Dr. Bell, and also from Kathy, that there'd been significant, uh, improvements made. And so, uh, I think there's an awful lot of wind in your sail, and, and I think you're moving in a very positive direction, and it's my hope that that will continue. As I've, I've said to other school divisions that have, that have worked with me, you want to show me the door, whether I go back to Williamsburg via the, the ferry, or go back, uh, across the bridge, the bottom line is, you want to move, uh, me out, and get your schools going in the direction that they're going, so that you don't have an MOU. I understand that, I appreciate that, I know that that's what your goal is, and I'll do everything I possibly can to try to help you in that area, but I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. King.
Madam Chair, can I ask, make a switch and allow Calipul to go last? Because we have a visitor that would like to present, um, what we are doing with our custodial services.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Edwards, can you introduce Mr. Keekline?
Yes, sir. Dr. Bell, Franklin City Public Schools Board members, um, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Keekline, who represents Supply Works. And they're in the business of making schools safe and healthy. Healthy in the aspect of custodial supplies, healthy in the aspect of restrooms, healthy in the aspect of water fountains. So, anything that you talk about with health and sanitation, he's the duty expert, and he's given us a vast amount of knowledge and improvements of how we can improve Franklin City Public Schools. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Tom Keekline from Supply Works, who will bring forth information of how he's making Franklin City Public Schools a healthier environment. Mr. Keekline, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes to speak with you tonight, uh, and I'd like to thank Mr. Edwards for inviting me to come up and do this. Uh, I've been, uh, in this business a long time, and we take pride in helping the people that we work with, the, the customers achieve the best that they can do in terms of clean, healthy environments for our students to, uh, to learn. And that's my whole reason for working every day. Uh, my life is in the schools, working with your custodians, and I've had a chance to meet, I think, almost everybody, uh, on your custodial staff in the last month. And I would just like to say, everybody's been so polite, and so helpful with being able to get my, uh, get acclimated to your buildings, and find out where every closet is, and where all the different things are that I needed. And, um, I also work closely with all of your principals, and I've met all of them, and everybody, everybody's been very helpful. Our company, uh, specializes, and particularly myself, in, uh, educational, uh, facilities. I, I have some other places that I work with, but honestly, uh, my life is with schools. And the, uh, the part that is so good, uh, for me to be able to appreciate is to see a building or a school system, and see the advancements, and the, uh, the, the things that we've done to improve the health of that building. And you hear so many things nowadays about the, the different viruses, the enterovirus, MRSA, and all these different things. And, uh, I stress every single day to all of my folks that you want to clean the touch points, the things that we touch every day, because those are the things that can transmit from one individual to another, these types of viruses and bacteria. So, our goal is to put as many children in those seats as possible, and to reduce your absenteeism, and have it so that your community and the visiting team that comes in for a basketball game to come out and go, you know what, those schools really look nice, look how pretty those floors were, look how clean the bathrooms were. So, I'm kind of a, uh, I'm real picky about all these different types of things when it comes to health. Bathrooms, water fountains, locker rooms, people get tired of me talking about it, but yet, those are the things that we focus on. And so, what I wanted to do, I've got a couple of things on the iPad, or on the, the pad here, that if you don't mind, I'd like to show to you, and how we support the program, and the different things that we do, uh, to enhance the training of your custodial staff, and to improve the environment of your schools. So, hopefully, these have not timed out on me, so let me see if I can't pull a couple up here. The first thing, Mr. Edwards wanted me to make sure I mentioned to you, was, uh, our company, uh, partnered and was awarded a contract through a, a purchasing group called U.S. Communities. And when I started working with your schools, I did notice that as of, um, two thousand and four, uh, your schools have been registered with U.S. Communities, and what that simply does is allow us, our company, to be able to link that purchasing contract, and those prices with major vendors to your, uh, account, so that we're able to get you the best national, uh, pricing uh, on all of the different things that we do, uh, with your schools. So, I did want to show you that, that, um, it hasn't been utilized recently, I don't think, but you are a member of that, there's no charge for it, but it does give you that advantage of being able to take, uh, advantage of that national purchasing program. Some of the folks in the room today, back behind me, saw me running through the elementary school, putting up soap dispensers. Uh, hand washing is so critical, uh, to, to the health of everybody in our buildings. And so, I've, I've done about half of your elementary school, uh, with the, the Gojo product, foam hand soap. The children that I saw already were starting to use it, they'll start, they'll play with it for a little bit, and, uh, really enjoy it, but then they'll get down to where they use it in a regular basis, and we want them to wash their hands after the bathroom, before lunch, and all of these different times during the day. And so, there are different, uh, things that we can offer to you, if you choose to use them. Uh, for example, there's, there's posters like this, that we, that we put in bathrooms, or we put in the cafeteria serving line to make sure you wash your hands, or use hand sanitizer, uh, before you eat lunch, or, you know, before you do, go to another task. And so, Gojo Industries is a big part of who we work with. I want to thank Anita for helping me do this, because she was showing me where all the buttons were to push. Let me see here. Training. We take the training to your custodial staff. So many different times, everybody else in the building, teachers, all of the administration, they're going, they're doing seminars, they're, they're having continuing education. We bring staff development to your individual building, or together as a group for your district, and so we, we utilize a couple of major companies, you can see on here, we have, uh, Spartan Chemical, which is a major company, and I'll show you one of the things that we did last week with, with them. Uh, Diversey, which is the old Johnson Wax product, in case you've ever heard of that before, and then Three M Company. And there's everything on here, from how to clean a toilet, to how to, uh, properly, uh, refinish a floor, and make your floor shine for the whole school year, uh, to safety issues like, uh, bloodborne pathogens, and, and all of the different topics like that. There's over fifty different training modules, and these are available to your schools on site to utilize. And then, I also utilize these training programs when I come in and do my training with your custodial staff. I plan to do that about three times during the school year, and then we typically have a celebration at the end of the school year to celebrate what we had just gone through, at, you know, usually at the end of June, first of July. And we do kind of a, a fun, hands-on kind of a thing in the summer. So, we, we have certificates, which they really appreciate, uh, we, we do all different types of things like that, and, uh, they appreciate the recognition and the attention that, that we give them to be able to enhance their performance, and teach them things, to be able to help them do things better, get the bathrooms cleaned better, whatever it might be. My job, my commitment to you is simply, I'm a resource, I'm a consultant, um, I go through your buildings every month. If I see something that's not right, and if I know how to fix it, I will do everything I can to get it fixed. Uh, there's some, I, I think we have some hard water up here, and some of our fixtures have a lot of staining in them. I'm going to do everything I can to get that out, because even if it's cleaned as hard as it can be cleaned, if it looks, if it's stained, it still looks like it's not clean. And so, I'm going to try to help with, with solving problems like that. So, that's what I do, um, I have a pair of boots in my car, I don't come dressed like this, uh, but it's what I enjoy doing. And my, you know, I enjoy being able to, uh, change something from what it was to, uh, where it looks so much better, and the, the staff, the custodial staff really appreciates it. Uh, I've had, uh, friends that I've worked with now for, um, I think eighteen years, in some of my school systems, and, uh, we're all friends, we're all, we're all in it together, and, um, I appreciate what they do, and, and I hope they, you know, appreciate me coming by and helping them with the things that they do every single day. Uh, let me see what else I can show you here. Can I sign back into my email, is that okay with you? I wanted to show you some, can I show you some pictures of what I've done in the schools? Okay. I knew this would timeout. Hope there's no bad email that shows up here, first of all. Hope I'm not in trouble with anybody, it's City of Raleigh, uh-oh. What I've done is, uh, and Mr. Edwards asked me to take some pictures of some of the things that, that I've seen, and some of the corrections I've made. I'm a real buff on saving you all money, and OSHA, if they walk into a building, and if they see a spray bottle that has no label on it like that, they can fine you a bunch of money. So, my job is, when I go through, I'll, I'll find those types of things, and I'll make sure that the, the labels that I have for those particular products, they have plenty of them in inventory, and that I don't see anything like this, because I want to keep you from getting in, in a, a, a letter from OSHA, or the Health Department, or anybody else going, hey, we found this, and, uh, they do find, and, um, it's not something that, that, um, I want to see anybody get. I'm a, I'm a fiend on clean water fountains, touch points, you clean them as many times a day as you possibly can. Uh, now, these are the bottles that, and these were, I didn't stage this, this is how they look today, I put this dispenser, uh, these products in two weeks ago, and this was the cart, and that's exactly how they should look. There's four products, everyone's labeled properly, and everything is in compliance with, um, with OSHA. Okay, this is the elementary school, and what we've done is, we've taken down an old, uh, soap dispenser, and put in the Gojo foam soap. I did that today, and, uh, so, and I've put a restrictor in it, because the children at the elementary school have much smaller hands, and so they don't need as much soap, so I put it in a restrictor, so they get plenty to wash their hands, but they don't get too much. And then, we put in, uh, a roll towel dispenser, like you see there, that they pull it down one at a time. It controls your cost, it, uh, reduces the money that you spend, and it will save you money in the long run. It's, it's the same dispenser I have in all of my other schools.
The faculty appreciate it and their benefits.
Thank you, yeah, I've already gotten some good comments about that. One of the things that I noticed when I was here, um, was that some of the toilet paper dispensers were broken, and uh, that's not how we want the paper to be, so we put up new dispensers, so that the paper is sanitary and sealed. I'll show it to you in a second. Not quite sure why I put that one in, but I'll show you another picture in a second. Th- this is the, the old dispensers that we've now converted over to the new. Uh, it's, the, the multi-fold towel dispenser is, um, is less expensive per towel, but it's more expensive to use, because you just don't get one towel, you get multiples, and that raises your cost, as opposed to the roll towel. And these dispensers are almost impossible to clean inside. CDC says you're supposed to clean it every time you refill it. Nobody in this country would ever clean inside one of those, it's too labor-intensive. So, um, it's, it, uh, that Gojo dispenser is much more sanitary, being hermetically sealed. Water fountains, uh, it's, that's the hard water stain that we have here. I've got something that I'm going to work with your custodians to help get that corrected, and get that fixed, and get those nice and clean and shiny for you. Um, there's, uh, the soap dispenser again. Just got a couple more pictures for you. This is the, the toilet tissue dispenser, you can see now it's sealed up. Uh, the other ones, uh, the children could figure out how to open it up and take the roll off, and sometimes it would end up in the toilet, which causes plumbing issues, sometimes it would end up on the floor or other places. So, this is a more sanitary way for your children, for your staff, for everybody in the community who's in your buildings, to use the products. Didn't know you were going to hear about toilet paper tonight, did you? Uh, this is, I mentioned the restrictor, that's inside that soap dispenser, and that's what that little lever is, it gives you point four mils per push for the, the children at the elementary school. This. What, the most economical way for you to get a cleaning solution out is to use your water, and use a concentrate, mix it together, and you have a bottle made up for fifty cents or seventy-five cents, as opposed to buying it ready to use, and it's going to cost you two dollars. So, this dispenser mixes water, chemical together, it's labeled, all the bottles are labeled, and it's the most economical way, it's safe for your custodians to use, because they're not touching the product, the concentrate, and it's, it's the, it's just a very, uh, economical and very, uh, and, and it's only four products, that basically will clean ninety-five percent of your building, those four products right there. Any questions as I'm talking here? And going back to the bottles. It, it's all about cleaning for health, cleaning for appearance. You know, we want shiny floors, but we really want healthy buildings. We want the, the ceiling vents to be clean, we want the water fountains clean, we want the bathrooms clean, we want to be able to walk into the building and go- We want to be able to walk into the building and go, we're proud that this is our building, and the custodians, I hope, will appreciate the things that we're gonna do in the future. I just started with you last month, so this is brand-new. But I do want to thank you for this opportunity. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to help answer them for you, and any concerns.
Is your company a one-man operation?
No, actually, I do a lot of my own. Supply Works just was purchased by The Home Depot about five months ago. So we're a large company, but I like to tell everybody I do business on my own level. I go to my people, my schools, my communities, and I pretty much run everything on my own. I bring consultants in to do training. I have about four different people that I'll bring in, whether it's floor care, whether it's infection control, whether it's, you know, carpet care, or whatever it might be. But I use my resources to do that. But when, month to month, I'm the person that you will see.
How many hours a month would you say you would spend here?
Probably about a day and a half per month.
Well, you've done some very impressive work. I appreciate it.
Oh.
I was just looking at maybe the fact that we had been registered since, what, 2004?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that what it was?
Yes, ma'am.
And I came on the board 2009, but I never heard of this registration prior. So we were registered, is this a state connection, or how is, how does this registration work?
U.S. Communities, we were awarded the contract four years ago. So beyond four years ago, I'd never heard of U.S. Communities before. There's about 55,000 members nationwide. I live in Cary, North Carolina. NC State University is one of the top 10 participants in U.S. Communities. There's other members of the, of U.S. Communities have never taken advantage of the offering that they have. There's about 30 or 40 different companies that are members and vendor members for U.S. Communities. We're the only one that do janitorial supply products. That's all I do, just the things that we're talking about tonight. There's other companies that do, you know, HD supplies in there for air conditioners or hardware. There's Cintas in there for rental equipment and mats and uniforms. There's 30 or 40 different vendors that are approved. Somebody might have registered back in '04 to take advantage of something, and if you look at, you can click on that site, and you can see for the last, I think, five or 10 years, what the buying history was. So sometimes I'll look at it, and somebody will buy $80,000 the first year, and then nothing the next year. And so they probably joined just to take advantage of that particular thing. They needed to buy some vehicles, or whatever it might be, and then they no longer participated in it.
So we get this service as a compliment, or what?
U.S. Communities is simply one of our purchasing, budgeting alliances, that we can link the prices of the products that you purchase from me to that, so we get the national pricing. Supply Works, the company I'm with, is the company that actually is delivering product to you. I'm the person that comes by, inspects the buildings, trains everybody, does all the different things I talked about. You don't pay me a dime. All you're doing is, you're buying the product, you're buying the hand soap, the floor finish, the trash can liner, or whatever it might be. You're buying it. The budget that you have, as far as I understand what your budget is for the year, we will keep you at or below that budget for the school year. I have some schools that I've been with for 19 years now, and we simply bill them the same price each month, and I've done it for 19 years. And we've always, always been under budget by the end of June of that next fiscal year. And so that's, and it's, it works. But what you get from me is simply the added value of being a sole source, to be able to supply to you. The other thing that we're doing is, we're gonna ship directly to your individual school building, as opposed to the maintenance department. And that way, it takes your maintenance people out of the delivery business, well, out of the receiving business to bring it in, and then out of the delivery business to throw a couple cases of something and taking it over to the elementary school. So we'll deliver to the high school, the middle school, the elementary school, and so that there's, you know, it frees up those folks to do other things.
So it's almost, the service is almost like when we buy textbooks. If the company, the publisher decides to send someone out to train teachers, then that's the courtesy because of the utilization of that particular publisher. So your service is almost the same thing. And we had two members who've been on the board prior. Did you all ever hear of that, Mrs. Jackson, or Mr. Hubbard? Were you on the board 2004, or?
No.
Okay.
Now, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you think that we've been a member of since 2004, the national buying program thing?
Right.
You're a member of it, so it's kinda very simplistic. It's kinda like Sam's Club. If you're a member of it, you might get discounts on different things. Am I understanding that correctly? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Well, the U.S. Communities part of it simply links, what we've done is, we partnered with like 50 major vendors, Rubbermaid's, you know, 3M, all of the big, major companies in the country. They, we then bid out to U.S. Communities, so we have the best possible national pricing.
We have the best prices.
Right. So for example, City of Denver school system is one of our partners. I've never seen them before, but I know they are. I don't go to Colorado. But what you pay for that roll of toilet paper is the same thing that they pay in Denver, at the City of Denver City Schools. And I don't know how big they are, but it doesn't matter the size of your school system. And this also applies to government office buildings, Wake County office buildings.
If you're a member of it.
If you're a member. Right.
And they might have, they may have, we could've been buying all along without.
From one vendor versus all over the, all over the City of Franklin, South Fork, everywhere.
And do they have more than just janitorial supplies?
Yes, ma'am.
We could look into buying other stuff from them, I assume.
Yes. And I'll supply you that list. Yes, ma'am.
Right. I got you.
Yes, ma'am.
I suppose even the paper towels that you showed, the dispensers, would that be something that we'd get from your company? Would that be?
Yeah, we could. They track when the paper towels will be, possibly be used, and then when we need more, so we don't have waste, because what we've been having is waste, and dollars go out the door.
Right. Yeah. What, those products, anything janitorial, that, all of your restroom supplies, all of your cleaning supplies, your ancillary products for, you know, whatever it might be, bloodborne pathogen kits, or whatever it might have to do with sanitation and janitorial, would come through Supply Works. There isn't any other division or company within U.S. Communities that offers that particular product, because they specialize in something else. So we would be that sole source for that for you.
And then, Tom, also, tell them about the program where we reward the custodians in that building, for a clean building.
What I've done for 19 years in some of my schools is, I go in, I used to go every month to inspect my schools, and I was told by a couple principals, it's a little bit too much, Tom, you need to back off. That was a long time ago. So now I go in quarterly. I walk your buildings, I look at everything. I look at the parking lot, is there trash in the parking lot? Because if there is, people who drive up, and I'm a visitor to your building, so I'm driving up, if there's trash out there, you know, that's not an image that we want to present. Are the cobwebs at the doors? Are the mats clean? Do the floors shine? But not only do the floors shine at the front lobby, but do the floors shine in the back of the building? Because, you know, that, we want the whole building to be maintained like that regularly. And so what I do is quarterly, and I can either start this in December, or maybe it might be better to start it in January, it's up to you. I'll do an inspection. We like to call it a team building survey, because a lot of people don't like the word inspection, because I don't want to intimidate anybody, I don't want to put everybody, anybody in, you know, get them nervous. What we're trying to do is always make sure that the next inspection, the next building survey, we trend up. We always want to make sure that if we got it 90% this time, we want to stay at, you know, we want to go up. We don't want to go into the 80s. Whatever I saw that needed to be corrected, I'm gonna show them how to do it, or provide the tools that they need to get it done. And what we're gonna do is, I'll submit my reports to administration, and it'll have a numerical score. And then, I believe you're gonna select the winner and present them with a trophy? Is that correct?
Yes, we have a level trophy.
Okay. And so that'll be quarterly, then?
We like monthly.
Or, you want to start that monthly?
Just like we do the ten.
Okay, we'll do that monthly, then. Yep, and then they can have bragging rights for that month. And, but I'll let administration select the winner. But if you're gonna base it on numerical score, that's one way to do it. Or you can also go, okay, this school improved from an 80 to an 88. They improved eight points. So maybe your criteria is totally up to you, how you want to award it. But it, hey, they love the recognition, and they love to win, and if they, and I've seen it, they go, okay, you got it this time. In fact, I heard somebody say that back over here, it's, you got it this time, but I'm gonna get it next month. So, because that's what we want. We want everybody to work hard to, you know, to get to where they want to be. And if they don't get that trophy, we want them to try to get it harder the next time around. And so, and I look at everything, but I tell them what I'm looking for. I don't sneak up on them, I'm not looking under the rug in the corner, I'm looking at things that you can easily see, and say, you know what, I can see, you can see it, spray it, wipe it off, or do this or do that. It's basic stuff, and it works. It works. And like I said, the best thing about it is, when I can see the improvements and the teamwork come together, and it starts at the top and it works its way down. The whole school, everybody in that building benefits from what the custodians do. They work hard. And what I, what we do with this program is, we enhance what they do, we help them do better. And we show that with the trophies, like you're talking about. I've had my picture in the paper, in the Coastland Times, in the Outer Banks, handing out certificates. And it's, it's a good thing. They like it, and it's what I really enjoy.
Thank you, Sue.
Do you work with any of the other schools and the surrounding divisions?
I just snuck into Virginia a couple months ago here. Everything I've been doing has been in North Carolina. I go to the Outer Banks, Currituck and Dare County, I go to Ashboro, I go to Pamlico County. The only other business I've ever had in Virginia is Chesapeake Square Mall, and that was a national account. And I called Mr., oh, actually, I emailed Mr. Edwards one day back in July, and we started talking. And I drove up 95, snuck around the welcome to Virginia line when nobody was looking. And so the answer to the question is, I certainly would like to continue to work and call on other people, but right now, personally, I'm the only, you're the only school system I'm working with. We do work with some other systems to the west of here. I do not know who they are, because they aren't mine. I could find out who they are. But for me, you're the first one I've started working with in Virginia.
Other questions? Other questions? All right.
Any questions? Didn't know you were gonna talk about hand soap and toilet paper and all that stuff tonight. I tell everybody I have a master's degree in bowl cleaning, and everybody gets a good laugh about it, but it's so important to maintaining the image of your buildings and the health of your buildings.
Thank you so much, Mr. Keith. We really appreciate your being here and giving us the thorough report this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
All right, the student, you catapult, catapult, that's true, catapult, we changed that one. All right?
Good evening, everyone, again.
Good evening.
We won't take up too much of your time. I do want to say that, okay, that the support that we're about to bring to you will be for October, and that's our first step-down month. And so please don't be alarmed by its shortness, just know that we're still working very hard, but we are with you half the time now, and when we're away, we miss you very much. So, just to get started. So when we're talking about what students need to know, be able to understand, are you doing it? Okay. All right, so regularly, we meet with the teachers to make sure that we're planning with them, making sure the lesson plans are aligned, as we normally do. We do, we have also finished our second nine weeks pacing calendars, which have proven to be extremely effective. And all of those are on the Google Drive now, and we have also delivered the blank pacing calendars for the second nine weeks to J.P. King, as stated in the strategic exit plan that we wrote up. I also delivered a PLC in literacy and mathematics. During that PLC, I discussed with teachers the true language of math, and where our struggling readers can have pitfalls. And so just to give you an example of one of the activities that the teachers participated in, we looked at just the number two, and the word two. So TO, and TWO, and TOO, and all those things, that these students are reading in their word problems, and how that could throw a struggling reader off. So we participated in a number of activities to look at the literacy and the reading processes and the writing processes during math and science for our students. And each teacher received a packet from me that I purchased for them, and it was called Helping Struggling Readers to Tackle Math Word Problems. And so each teacher was asked to incorporate one of these activities into their lessons within this nine weeks. And so I'll be going in to observe that, to make sure, to follow up.
Good evening, everyone. The Directive Achievement for Literacy. I work with teachers and continuing on the writing process. All of our students in grades K through 5 are writing in their journals. It's what we call our quick writes in the mornings. In some classes, they're writing in their journals at the beginning of their writing block. And every two weeks, students select their journal entry that they want the teacher to read, and the teacher grades that journal based on a rubric. So we are truly preparing them for middle school. We've noticed that students are writing more. What they're writing is clear at this point, they're including their punctuation, capitalization. And for our students in grades 3, 4, and 5, their writing is taking more shape with purpose. So we will be continuing that program throughout the year, and our next writing prompt, school writing prompt, will be in January. And at that time, we will have data to show where we started with our first writing prompt in September compared to where we are in January. So we look forward to sharing that with you later on in the year. Also, we know that special education is one of our gap groups, when we look at our school report card. So I work with the math specialist, the fifth grade math teacher, and the fifth grade collaborative teacher, on ways in which she could work with her students in order to help them grow. So we took time to go through the pacing guides, we looked at strategies to use with the special education students, we looked at strategies to use in teaching vocabulary and comprehension skills. And we're continuing to do that throughout the year. We're meeting with teachers individually, by grade levels, they're part of our grade level planning teams, and we also meet with them individually to continue to express, you know, our desire for all of our students to grow, and coming up with strategies and skills that can help them to grow even more. So that's a continuing process. From that, we also, we had, during the year, we've had, in October, we had a third grade teacher to move from social studies to reading. So during the time of October, I work with that teacher on the pacing, the curriculum, writing lesson plans, strategies to introduce skills, and small group instruction as well as word study. That was followed up with a reading specialist going in, working with that teacher to provide additional support in times when, you know, catapult is not within the school. I've also modeled lessons on justification. How do you find your answer? What is your proof that that is your answer? I've modeled those lessons and all the I've modeled those lessons in all the third grade reading classes. The catapult team also worked with teachers on anchor charts and strategies, additional strategies to enhance learning. Anchor charts are charts that we work with the teachers to make in order for students to understand a skill that they may be having difficulty with. And they can use that anchor chart to help them when the teacher assigns a group assignment or individual assignment. It's like a hint to how to start the assignment and complete it. For example, an anchor chart in math may contain all the steps and an example of how to solve a problem. So, when the student is working on problem solving, that anchor chart is like a way that the student can look up there, follow those steps to work independently. Also, in reading, we use anchor charts for things such as main idea, vocabulary. So, students can look at, how do we actually go through the steps of finding the main idea? And all of our anchor charts contains, contain examples to support that. Okay? Ms. Stewart and I, we go to all of our classes and we follow up every time we teach an anchor chart to a teacher, a group of teachers, or we teach new strategies to enhance learning. We follow up by going to those classrooms and we conduct observations, follow-up observations to ensure that the teachers are using their strategies and anchor charts correctly. If we find that the anchor chart is not in place, we either make the anchor chart or we assist the teacher in making that anchor chart so that students are provided everything they need to be successful.
Due to observations, I found it necessary to gather everyone that was helping with fifth grade math because we have a new teacher and she is an awesome teacher. And, you know, I'm very thankful for her. But we have to, I gathered the teacher's aide, the exceptional ed teacher, and the general ed teacher. And instead of, I do model in the classroom, but I wanted to strengthen their content knowledge. So, what we often do is they're my students and I'm the teacher. And so, I model how to teach that so that when the exceptional ed teacher breaks off, she's using the same vocabulary, the same instructional strategies that the general ed teacher's using. And so, that we're all consistent across the board and that has shown to be quite effective. And so, we hold several sessions almost weekly, every time I'm here for that. We've also just had our benchmarks. And so, as you know, we conduct two pacing checks with the teachers before those benchmarks are given to make sure that everything that the students are tested on, that has been taught. And so, that is done before every benchmark twice. Okay? And lastly, to make sure that, what do we do if they don't reach proficiency? I keep, I keep several coaching sessions with our new math coach so that she can keep things going once I'm gone. So, that's from the data room, from benchmarks, from anything that I do, she's able to do once I'm gone. Okay? Any questions?
Data room?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time we would have had the data room at S.P. Morton?
No, ma'am, we've had one and it was very effective. And this year, well, last year too. What we have, our teachers do is come in and actually, you know, I have written their, each student's name is on a magnet. And the teacher will come in and move her magnets from tier three to tier two to tier one each nine weeks to see, have they moved up? Have they moved down? Talk about why they've moved down, why they've moved up. And so, they're actually touching each child with manipulatives.
I believe that we saw that when we toured too, didn't we?
Saw it.
We saw it at J.P. King. We did not see S.P. Morton.
Well, you have to combine C.R.s.
I'm gonna have to visit. I'm gonna have to visit to see that, I promise you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Next month, yes, ma'am. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Right, the next is that of the student liaison. And we apologize, it seems as though we've kept you a long time this evening, though being a student, you wanna be home doing homework. But we are now ready to hear from you, Mr. D.C.
Good evening. This month, all Franklin City Public Schools have participated in numerous events. S.P. Morton had family reading night on November third and will have another on the seventeenth. They will also be having crazy hair day tomorrow, the thirteenth. On the seventeenth, there will be a PTA Veterans' Day, Veteran's Celebration. On the nineteenth is grandparents and gingerbread day. And they've also been having a book fair, which will be closing on November twenty-fourth. At J.P. King, the Lady Mustangs have had three basketball games. On Tuesday, the tenth, there was a stream after-school enrichment program, which they will be having on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And this evening, there was a parent and parents and partners meeting. At Franklin High School, we had a Veterans' Day Ceremony hosted by the J.R.O.T.C. program on Tuesday, November tenth, to honor those who served our country. Today, students that got a seventy percent or higher on their benchmark got to go to the movies to watch The Martian. The band, there was a band competition last week and I believe they placed first place. Also, the FHS Theater Program, which I'm a part of. We placed runner-up on Saturday's competition at Surrey and we will be moving on to regionals at West Point on Saturday, November twenty-first. There will also be an SOL Academy next Saturday, the twenty-first, and on other Saturdays following that. And also, SCA has been having many meetings and we're planning a put lock soon. And the senior classes have been having lots of meetings to plan senior trips and the other classes have been planning meetings too. To, they're really getting involved with their class to plan activities now that they see that SCA is becoming a big deal. And they are trying their best to get involved in what goes on in our school.
Oh, that is wonderful. Terrific. Thank you so very much. Right? Did anyone have any questions or comments? Professional development law.
Madam Chair, Board Members, the professional development law for October is presented for your purview. Any questions or concerns at this time?
Any questions or concerns? Okay, no questions or concerns, thank you. We can see that you're still busy and very much engaged your staff. Yes, quite busy. Right, next on the agenda is that of the Principal's Monthly Report.
Madam Chair, Board Members, you have the Principal's Monthly Report for your purview. As of today, I did another analysis of where we were in terms of student enrollment. Total enrollment in our division is eleven thirty-eight. If you subtract the seventy-four pre-K students that we have, we have one thousand and sixty-four students, which means we are plus-two on our adjusted ADM. So, that means we are pretty good, well, we are over budget. We are not under.
Under.
Yes, ma'am. Because you know, the last meeting, I said we were minus-nine, but now we're plus-two. And we will keep track of that monthly.
I still have a question about total withdrawals. And maybe I'm the one with the problem. And I don't know how this would fall out at the end of the year. We keep going there like all W's total to date at Franklin High School, one hundred forty-two boys, one hundred fifty-eight girls, and three hundred students. Withdrawals to date? All W's to date? Will you please look? Mm-hmm. I don't know how we account for that. And I'm just looking at it because, see, that's such a large number. I don't know. Could you check that, Dr. Bell, please? And the same thing about J.P. King. Well, J.P. King to date, look at those because you're talking about all W's. And it's just what? November? I don't know how that's reported. But that's a question.
I will have to see the calculations on that.
Thank you. And maybe it's being done different, I don't know. But W's are withdrawals. And to see that large number there raises a question for me. All right?
Even though we know that's not, it's not withdrawals, but it must be. It's, it's all we need, I need to ask Mrs. Lewis what that is in power schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because it's all W's.
Because you know we don't have three hundred.
That's what I'm saying. And see, and that need, that's why it needs to be corrected. It needs to be corrected.
Yes, it does.
Yes, right, mm-hmm. Thank you. All right, is there any other question or concern? Monthly financial report.
Mrs. Darrell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Bell again. You have before you the monthly reports. Are you have, do you have any questions?
Any questions, anyone?
Mrs. Darrell?
Yes.
Would you be willing, for what's, so it fit to happen if we had a board meeting and you come? Just do financial report one-on-one?
Sure.
I have, I don't know, I may be the only one on this board that's had a hard time understanding it. But I'm gonna ask for some help.
Okay.
We can get together about chairman and pick a day if the board really wants to have a meeting. Maybe I'm the only one that needs to know. Or we're having a problem understanding.
What is your question? You, I thought, I thought you said one-on-one at first. Now, now.
One-on-one.
One-on-one.
One-on-one, okay, all right.
A little class.
Oh, okay.
Finance for the board.
Oh, you mean one, maybe a one-hundred level class? A one-hundred level class, yes. If you had said that, I would have understood. All right, now, so then you think that we maybe could designate a time to come and just have maybe a little?
Mrs. Darrell come and talk to us and try to help understand how she's doing the finance report. Would you join with me?
Oh, all right. Is there anyone who is desirous of that happening?
I would have a couple years.
All right, so do we need a motion to that effect? I mean, and?
I just think we need to just pick a day.
Well, I mean, you wanna be sure you have a quorum there. That's what I'm trying to say. So, it would be nice if we had a motion to that effect that we do have a workshop on budget. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I recommend a motion that if we have a budget workshop, second.
It's probably moved in second, that we have a budget workshop. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. So, that means that if we have the workshop, then we would expect everyone to be there in attendance. Now, yes, we will now discuss a possible date. Or maybe let's go back and put down the dates to remember. Could you write that in, Mr. Counsel, on your agenda someplace so that when we get to dates to remember, we can include that? Right?
You're welcome.
Right, so, thank you so very much, Mrs. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is the second reading student dress uniform policy, J.F.C.A.A. And we did the first reading and we made some recommendations for change. And you receive now the policy with the changes that we discussed. Is there anything else that concerns you at this time? Are you ready to adopt? If not?
I make a motion to approve the second reading of the student dress code. Second.
It's probably moved in second that we approve the student dress code as the second reading. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Business by school board members. Important dates to remember. So, we know that we have the convention, the V.S.B.A. next week, the eighteenth through the twentieth. And is there anything else that we have on here by dates to end your convention? And then we have the community eligibility, health and hunger recognition. That's Thursday, November nineteenth.
Madam Chairman, speaking of that, I saw that Dr. Bell and Son know about that. Didn't we? We all expected to go to that instead of doing workshops at the convention?
That's, it is who would like to attend because I'm gonna go, Mr. Whiting is gonna attend. I know Dr. Leonard has said correspondence that she would like to attend. But it's solely up to the board members who would like to ride with me like we did last year that day. You know, and then we can go up there. So, it's solely up to the board who would like to attend. From Williamsburg, you know?
Yeah, we did that last year and we went in the morning. Now, the delegate assembly, but we went on the eighteenth. We went to the accountability meeting, didn't we, last year? So, that was on that day preceding the main day of the convention. This one is the main day of the convention. It is.
And this is the main meeting.
Yes, and, yes.
They probably don't wanna have, well, this still is up to the board members. But I know they, I don't know why we keep, why there's a conflict with them.
Virginia School Boys Association.
Doing that at the same time.
Right.
They know the meetings are.
Yeah, they know.
Oh, they know, yes. So, it's, well, this meeting starts at nine o'clock, but they have an agenda. So, there is no indication as to what time
No.
we're going to be on that agenda.
I looked today to see it posted, but they probably will have this at the beginning.
They do recognitions at the beginning. They do recognitions at the beginning of their meetings. I wish to go, but I have to be back for the delegate assembly at two o'clock. So, I'm the voting delegate, so I'm gonna probably, and I really wish to be there for this, but I can't. I'm afraid we get tired, if we get tied up in traffic or something. That's it. So, I'm not gonna take that chance. But if someone else wishes to go, Dr. Leonard, you say you're going to go?
Oh, you're back here.
And you are the vice chair. I mean, I would love, I would really love it if you were planning to go. Unless you want to go to the delegate assembly. One of us, you are the alternate.
I believe I did commit myself to that.
All right, all right. All right, good then, so you're gonna go to Richmond. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Yeah, yeah, that was, well, well, they did mention the two of you administrators in the communication and possibly any board members who wish to attend. So, we don't have to, but please express our regrets and our need to be at the convention. Thank you. And Dr. Hall Leonard will represent us as the vice chair. Very good. Very good. All right, good, now, that date for the training, budget training.
Madam Chairman, we used to meet the second Tuesday of the month. How do we have a calendar? As if I have a calendar that we were painting it, what day? December the seventh is not a good day to meet. That's one of the people meeting on December the seventh.
Mm-hmm. Well, how could December the second be on?
The seventh.
Oh, the seventh he asked. Oh, the seventh, all right. Yeah, that's, it's on a Monday.
Any day for that, Madam Chairman. Any day for that.
So, what is the will of the board? Yes.
Um, there is a finance one on one that's being offered that I sent out to you guys and you're coming on that day with that paperwork? I can't remember.
There are two ways here. I think it's six and a half.
Yes, fifteen and sixteen.
But I think that more has to do with doing a monthly, I mean, a yearly, the budget process. I think our wills want to.
Wait, wait a minute. Wait, 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 I need to see hands here. Too many people trying to talk at one time, please. All right, so, let's go back. Who was talking? What were you saying?
Mrs. Kendrick.
Okay, Mrs. Kendrick?
Yes, I was just asking if you guys would make a move instead of going or coming the same day as that finance one-on-one that's being offered by V.S.B.A. And several of you said that you would be willing to attend that.
Yes. Yes.
And if you could, I mean, if you're gonna come before or stay after that to do the, um, workshop.
I'd like, I'd like our workshop to be in the evening.
Yeah.
All right.
Mainly just, I was just, you know, I don't know.
Franklin City School Division specific, that's what you're asking for. Franklin City School Division, uh, wait one second, budget specific, that's what he's asking for. So, did we say the second, uh, Tuesday was out? For Decem-
I can't do it, babe. The first Tuesday, I think we got holiday, Thanksgiving, Christmas coming, I was.
The first Tuesday would be December fifth.
First.
First.
First, this, the.
December first.
Oh, that's right, December, I'm, I'm only in January, that's why, okay. Can't do the first?
I heard, it's Thursday.
There is.
The third, December third. All right, anything, in, is there any night in, uh, the second week, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, that would work? Well, eleven is out, that's Friday.
Madam Chair.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, mm-hmm.
December tenth, I wanted to inform the board that that's the night of the Division Holiday Celebration, December, December the tenth.
All right.
Cypress Club.
Holiday Celebration. It is, at, uh, Cypress Club. And, uh, what time, Dr. Bell?
Right now, I think five to nine.
Oh, that's good. All right.
We'll set it out.
So that's Thursday night in the second week of December. Is there any other night? And we're only talking about, about one hour at the most.
What about the ninth?
I can't do it.
We have business school board members. But we've always said the seventh is, uh, okay. Uh, is it possible for us to, what, when is the school board meeting? Is it the seventeenth? Is it possible for us to come in at five o'clock? No, December seventeenth is the school board meeting and we can come, is there anyone, five o'clock on, uh, December seventeenth?
That's the best.
All right. December seventeenth. Mm-hmm, at five P.M. And that first hour, five P.M. to six P.M. will be devoted to, uh, the presentation relative, regarding, uh, our s- budget.
And we can meet on, in the conference room so we can pull up the screen and.
Mrs. Kendrick, Mrs. Kendrick?
Yes.
You're probably saying the same thing, but I particularly want to be, with, kind of read our financial report, my budget, but the financial report.
Well, finance report, the report, okay, ref report, all right. I was thinking, but that, that still results in our, a report on the budget. There still is a budget, but that's okay, I'll go with finance. All right? Yeah, I understand, she understands what we're saying, because that's what she gives each month, isn't it? Yes. And it's budget related, same thing. All right. Any questions, anyone? Five o'clock on the seventeenth, all right. Is there anything else, business by school board members, that's the last item on the agenda, is there anything that anyone wishes to discuss or bring up at this time?
Madam Chair, Board Members, this is one item that, uh, I met with Mr. Martin, the city manager. And he was discussing with me if it, the will of the board to have a joint meeting with city council, uh, for three to four hours on a day in December if possible. If not, you know, we, but it's strictly the will of the board first, if you want to have the joint meeting. Secondly, um, what month? And then, thirdly, the facilitator that is, that would probably be used for the event if it moves forward, would interview each board member from council as well as from the school board to determine a common agenda for discussion during those three to four hours. But it's strictly up to the board if we want to move forward, or if you want to move forward with a meeting with city council on a common agenda.
I think it would be a good idea, how, what time are we talking about? Is this during the day, after hours?
Whatever. What, whatever the boards will, then I will take that back to Mr. Martin.
He doesn't.
Three hours, that's kinda hard to do in the evening. I'd like to see at least way to the first of the year, get, get past the holiday season.
You'd have to be on the five for me.
Um. So, I, I need to understand and, and maybe cite as, uh, chairperson of the board, um, that the major purpose I would think would deal with appropriations. That is the business of city council when it comes to the school board. So, I'm, it would almost be a waste of time for us to just have a meeting, to be having a meeting. So whatever the agenda is that the city council develops for us should be related to appropriations finances and, um, you know, building a budget for next, for our next school year. So, uh, and that usually begins about October, November. Uh, I would hope that Dr. Bell has begun already to survey the buildings, the administrative team to determine what your needs are financially for next year and then we go to the parents and the community, whatever. So, that usually starts, this is the season for building the budget. So it would be a little late for us to say we're going to delay and wait until January, February. If we have to, I'd like for it to be the first of January. But at the same time, I would like for us to look at the time that is expended. I would think that three o- three hours would be the, uh, maximum amount of time that is needed for the meeting.
You just said a facilitator would interview all of the council members and board members to declare the agenda.
To declare their agenda.
So they don't really have anything specific they want to talk about. So this would be more of a team building or?
Team, yeah.
So we're talking about three, three hours max, is that?
Yeah.
Is that consensus?
That's consensus.
All right, all right, three hours max. And then, um, of course, we will gladly talk to the c- uh, consultant. And I suppose that means determining a schedule for each of us, when it's convenient, so make yourselves available so that when we're contacted, we can say what day or time will work for each of us individually.
So is the board committing to the week of the fourth or the eleventh of January? Is that what we're saying?
It should be somewhere near the beginning of January in order for us to talk about our needs meaningfully for budgeting.
They're used to Monday evening meetings, so they might prefer that night in possible meetings.
So they usually meet second Monday, right?
First, uh, isn't it? Second and fourth, second and fourth, uh, their meeting nights.
Is that right, second and fourth?
Second and fourth, uh.
I would assume that the, uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Bell, excuse me. I would assume the eleventh would not be a good night to meet.
That's right.
Because they'll have their meeting.
That's their meeting.
Party, that agenda would be set.
Well, see, their meeting is on the fourth Monday, that's what we said, but we have to stay, yes, you did, Jan-, stay away from their meeting night. So January the fourth sounds good, does it sound good? All right.
Do you have a backup date?
That's January four, two thousand sixteen.
Do the third, do the third Monday if they want.
So, uh, what is the sixth?
Monday would be good for me.
Oh, yeah. Any Monday.
All right, so, let's go with January the fourth. We don't have a second date because everybody on this board works. We don't have a second date, so January the fourth.
Let's try it for the fourth.
Yes, yes. All right.
I would need to go to bed, so five thirty.
Five thirty, because we're saying three hours and eight thirty, mm-hmm. All right, so five thirty on January the fourth. Do we, do we have that?
January?
Yes.
Five thirty, yes, mm-hmm. All right. Now, if there is no further business by school board members, we shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make, Madam.
Chairman, Board Members, I make a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved in second, that we adjourn, you've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, up. Any opposition? Mo- motion is carried, thank you.